We're good. All right, gonna call this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers which throw from public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing and not participation at link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours tonight's meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden. Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, great. I will ask our acting city attorney tonight. Would you please read the closed session items, please?
Yes, we have four items for closed session. First, item A is liability claim. Claimant Benjamin Garcia, claim 25-29. Item B, oh, I'm sorry, agency claimed against City of Yuba City. Item B, liability claim. Claimant Jonathan Soto, claim 25-33. Agency claimed against City of Yuba City. Item C, liability claim. Claimant Gervier Singh, claim 25-34. Agency claimed against City of Yuba City. And item D, we are recommending be continued for the next meeting.
Perfect. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move to closed session. Is it ready? All right. Calling this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and which is open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be presented for public viewing and livestreamed, but not participation at link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours to tonight have been distributed to the city council prior to this meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
President.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pesquale.
Here.
All right, if you'll stand. I'm gonna have an invocation and then the pledge will be led tonight by Mr. Tony Kerlin. So please pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this evening. Father, we just thank you for the city that you've given us and the nation that we have. We just pray you'll give us wisdom and discernment in decisions that we make here so that they're for the better ment of our city. Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can be seated. Mr. Chaffin, will you introduce our acting city attorney tonight? And would you please give us a report out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. It is my pleasure to introduce one of our bright and shining stars in our firm, Michelle Hernandez. Michelle has a lot of experience, especially with regards to housing, land use, contracts, and those sorts of things. And she is running first chair tonight. And I don't mean to embarrass you, Michelle, but we wanted to bring her to Yuba City for her first council meeting with regards to the city council, not planning commission, but city council items. So, Michelle, with that, I'm going to turn this over for you if you want to do the announce out from closed session.
Thank you. There was reportable action in closed session. Item A, denial of request. Item B, notice of rejection. Item C, notice of rejection. And item D, continue to the next meeting. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Agenda modifications, is there anything from the council up here before we get to the ones we have? All right, at staff's request, we're removing items three, five, and six from the consent calendar. And those will be continued at our next meeting on the 18th. Okay? Anything else from the council? Hearing none. We'll move on to public communication. Appearances of interested citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing in consent calendar business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment and any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting requests at least 24 hours to tonight's meeting will allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited in large groups or encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any public comments on things not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Kerlin.
Tony Kerlin, 636 Anna Drive, Yuba City. Just want to remind everybody that on Thursday morning from nine to 12, we have our Senior Resource Fair. So hopefully, council and anybody here or watching can stop by. We will have flu shots and COVID shots. And we have like 80 different vendors. So that's it. Thank you.
Awesome, great job. Any other comments on things not on the agenda tonight? Any other comments? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There'll be a separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. Please remember items three, five, and six have been continued to the next meeting. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Any public comment on the consent calendar? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for comments and/or action.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to take action on items two and four with the modification of three, five, and six to be continued.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, consent calendar carries. Going to item number seven, business items. Finance Department recruitment request, customer service representative one, two. That will be our own Samantha Benzil that is going to be presenting. And unless the council has any objections, we'll be more than happy to just take a summary report instead of a great detailed one that works for you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to request the authorization for the Finance Department to conduct an open recruitment for a full-time permanent customer service rep, one, two, to fill a vacancy in our Finance Department. This position is essential to maintaining the Finance Department operations to ensure uninterrupted, excuse me, uninterrupted customer service and allow myself, the customer service manager, to focus on team leadership and process improvement to work in the business, on the business, not in the business? Apologize. We have a very, like our Super Bowl event coming up with business license renewals, so it's essential to fill this vacancy as soon as possible. And I'm happy to take any questions that you might have for me.
Perfect. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to thank Samantha for bringing this forward. As you know, we have a hiring freeze in place and that approval first by the city manager and then comes to the city council. And when we see something like this for the customer service representative, certainly we want to make sure that your council understands, you know, the necessity of certain positions like this. The general fund impact is very small as the collections that they do are primarily for our utilities and the Development Services Department, as well as some in our community services as well. But the funding that makes up this position for the annual salary and benefits is primarily from the non-general fund, especially with our utilities, water and wastewater. And so the impact of the general fund is fairly small, but it is a revenue generating position. And I also have to add, over the last couple of months, I should have remarked about this in my manager's report a while back ago, that within a matter of just a couple of weeks, I'd say over the last few months, I received comments from citizens regarding the performance of our customer service staff. You may think, hey, they just accept bills or they talk to folks that maybe have a disagreement with how much they were billed or how much they owe, et cetera. But it can be very challenging for them. And within that matter of two weeks, I had a citizen reach out saying, hey, I was helped by customer service on my business license filing and paying the fee for that and was met with a very kind worker. She did great work for me. And it went really well, had a great experience. And the other one involved an elderly gentleman who was on a payment plan. And you and I spoke about this, Mr. Mayor, and I think I sent it out to all the council members as well. But a couple of our customer service representatives got together, one of them knew of a nonprofit in the area, and it was a considerable amount that this elderly gentleman owed. But they made contact with the nonprofits. It's not in our policies, it's not in our processes, but they did the good human being thing and recognizing the importance that it is for all of our constituents that they have resources available. They made a call and that nonprofit paid their bill for them. So I just really want to say, they go far and beyond just collecting revenue for our departments and providing that critical service, but they also go that extra step and make sure our constituents are taken care of. So I just wanted to mention that and say thank you, Samantha, to you, your team, and Deanna for your leadership.
Yep, thank you. Yes, you guys have been rock stars in that. That was, we got the emails and that was an example of how our city team as a whole goes far above. So thank you.
This is our A-team and we just need one more team member. Thank you.
All right, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for action on this.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Finance Department to conduct an open recruitment for a full-time permanent customer service representative, one slash two, to fill a vacancy in the Finance Department.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Let's get the team filled out. Thank you. Good, agenda item eight, building regulations ordinance and the adoption of the 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code by Doug Libby. And just by the sheer sake of what that title is, we will accept a summary of this one.
Good call, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Doug Libby with Development Services. So we're updating the, our codes to be consistent and adopt the new state building code. This happens every three years. Comes down to us from the State Building Standards Commission. Cities and counties are actually required to adopt it. All codes, basically, these allow for improvements to be made due to new materials, methods of construction, and technological advances. So should a jurisdiction not act to adopt the code, then it does actually take effect. So you kind of wonder, well, why are we here doing this? Well, by adopting it ourselves, it gives us the opportunity to make amendments to the administrative portion that is specific to our city. And so basically, this puts a placeholder in that whether now or in the future, we can make amendments to that administrative portion. So some of the noteworthy changes for the code change now is it significantly updates the requirements for electrical vehicle charging. The existing code really only required you to be, for commercial use, to be EV capable, which means to install conduit. And so now you're actually going to have to install 240-volt Level 2 chargers. And there's a table in the building code that says how many you have to have per the number of spaces and receptacle outlets. The updated code also requires that electric heat pump technology be implemented for both space and water heating in new single-family homes. This next one, I think, is a really good change. A new California Wildland Urban Interface Code is being established in Title 24. Currently, these requirements were spread over several different codes. This really consolidates this into one code that makes it just more accessible for everyone to be able to use, both as for a regulator as well as for a user. For commercial projects, the Energy Code now introduces an electric-ready requirement for commercial kitchens. So going forward, if you are building a restaurant, putting in a commercial kitchen, you're going to need to include not just, if you're not a gas line, but also an electric plug-in so that in the future you can transition to electric. And for commercial projects, there's a requirement that battery energy storage systems are now required when you install solar. So some new legislation I wanted to touch base on is Assembly Bill 130. It was actually a trailer bill that was included with this year's state budget. Some of the changes that it made was AB 130 freezes further amendments to the state building code until 2031. So three years from now, you will not have me standing here. With the exception for local residential standards related to home hardening or wildfire mitigation, they can make changes for that or for times declared emergency. Also, AB 130 had some good news for merchant home builders. So typically, this time of year, merchant home builders who have master plans approved with the jurisdiction, they have to update those master plans, have them stamped by an engineer to meet the new code, get them submitted, get them reviewed and approved. Boils down to time and money. This law also allowed for approved master plans to be extended or grandfathered in for a 10-year period if you don't make significant changes to the plans. As typical, we will do outreach to make sure that our design professionals are aware of the new code requirements. And the recommendation, introduce an ordinance of the city to update the various chapters of the code to adopt the new building code with certain amendments, additions, and deletions, and waive the first reading. And that would conclude my comments unless you have any questions.
All righty, thank you, Mr. Libby. Is there any questions or comments here from the council first?
Doug, are you going to have a educational thing? I remember years ago when the seismic stuff came out, the city and county had thing over at the Veterans Hall where they brought in all kinds of contractors to update them. Are you looking to do that, Doug?
We will get educational information from both, from various sources, and we will be pushing that out electronically to our design professionals. We will have some information also available at the counter.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Right. Seeing none, as this is an ordinance, we actually have to do a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing for the building regulations ordinance and the adoption of the 2025 edition of the California Building Standards Code. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that would like to make any comments, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Any public comments under the hearing? Hearing no comments, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to move it back to the council for action. And since we had the public hearing, be advised, you got to read the whole thing.
Through the mayor. Move to approve item number seven, building regulation ordinance and adoption of the 2025 edition of the California Building Code Standards. Recommendation, introduce an ordinance to the city council of the City of Yuba City repealing chapters one through 14 of Title VII of the Yuba City Municipal Code and reenacting chapters one through 14 of Title VII, adopting reference the 2025 California Building Code, 2025 California Electrical Code, 2025 California Mechanical Code, 2025 California Plumbing Code, 2025 California Energy Code, 2025 California Historical Code, 2025 California Existing Building Code, 2025 California Reference Standards Code, 2025 California Residential Building Code, 2025 California Green Building Standards, Cal Green Code, 2024 Uniform Swimming Pool Spa and Hot Tub Code, et cetera, with certain amendments, additions, and deletions thereto by title only and waive the first reading.
Good job. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Libby.
Thank you, and I apologize for that council member Pesquale.
I marked that down.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I, through the mayor, if I may. Doug, I had a quick question. So on the EV chargers, so say a grocery store goes in, how many EV chargers are required, say, for a standard grocery stores? Based on square footage or?
It's based on the number of parking spaces required for that particular use.
Okay.
There's like a table in the building code that just kind of follow.
Got it. Some of those usually, they usually run good $150,000, $200,000 for a EV charging station, somewhere in that range?
So DC fast chargers will run to several hundred thousand dollars a unit. The Level 2 chargers are significantly less expensive because they charge at a much lower level.
Got it. Like a trickle charger?
They'll charge up to, you know, typically from 7,000 or seven kilowatt, kilowatt-hours, up to typically nine or 10. So get that, gets you somewhere between, you know, probably 25 to 30 miles in an hour if you were plugged in the whole time.
Got it.
So.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we're all good. All right. Moving on to agenda item nine, fire prevention ordinance and adoption of the 2025 California Fire Code. We are privileged to have Kaylee Bartlett tonight. You have the floor, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Kaylee Bartlett, Fire Safety Inspector with the Yuba City Fire Department here for our 2025 Fire Code adoption, just as we did with the building code. So this is a tri-annual adoption. Basically, we do this every three years, just like the building code. So we do also have a few municipal codes that we do also carry on through our adoption process. We are proposing no additional local amendments this year. We are only requesting that we move existing amendments forward from the current ordinance. Those amendments are the installation of the fire sprinklers required in commercial buildings that meet or exceed 3,600 square feet. This has been a local requirement since 1992. The permits required for the Fire Department for the sale of safe and sane. This requirement has been in effect since 2003 and was updated in 2023. Permits required from the Fire Department to install security gates across fire department apparatus access roads. This requirement has been in effect since 2003. With this code cycle, there are a few kind of key changes. These are just a few of them. We do have the new Wildland Urban Interface, the WUI code. Currently, we do not have any properties that fall under this code. We do have some occupancy classification changes for the lithium-ion battery facilities, increasing kind of the hazards of that. And then there are new regulations and guidance for the safe storage of various battery types. Most of the changes are editorial clarification and/or relocations into different sections. There is no fiscal impact locally for the adopted and amended portions. There are minimal for the state mandated sections. Our recommendation is to introduce an ordinance repealing and reenacting chapter five of Title IV of the Yuba City Municipal Code entitled Fire Prevention and waive the first reading.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council? Any comments from the council? All right, seeing none. And again, this is an ordinance, so we will do a public hearing. So I'm opening up the public hearing for the fire prevention ordinance and adoption of the 2025 California Fire Code. If anybody from the public would like to make any comments on this, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to move back to the council for action. And just like the other one, you do have to read this one, but it's my.
Oh, I want this one, too. Through the mayor, take action on item nine, fire prevention ordinance and the adoption of 2025 California Fire Code. Recommendation, introduce ordinance to the city council of the City of Yuba City repealing and reenacting chapter five of Title IV regarding fire prevention in the 2024 International Fire Code by title only and waive the first reading.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you both tonight.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along. Item 10, future agenda items. Is there anything from the council that we want to bring up to come back? All right, hearing none. We will move right on to reports and communications. Mr. Bendorf, city manager's report.
I've got about six or seven items, if you don't mind. I don't have any.
Short and sweet. All right, we'll bring it up to council reports. Councilmember Cole.
All right, so short and sweet. I attended on Friday evening the SEEK parade, or a presentation actually, in gratitude for city council of Yuba City with Mark and Dave and Mike and Charne. Thank you to Charne and Sarb for having us. Charne took us to many tents and we ate very well, so very good food. We were interviewed by local radio, which really reaches many, many people in the state of California and beyond. So that was a real cool thing to get to do. And then also Sutter County Children and Family Commission meeting. They held their fifth diaper bank and gave out almost 14,000 and had a car seat checkup, which was well-attended. Have been doing Help Me Grow at school events. And for the year 2025, they've served 41,000 children in our area. And then the Caltrans newsletter in January is actually going to feature the Sutter County Pedestrian Bicycle Program Study that we did recently. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Adventist Health Interfaith Reception at the 5:30 in Marysville. It was well-attended. Food bank this month, the really, it's just been, it's really difficult time right now for all the food banks with the government closed down, shutdown, and other factors. So just keep that in mind. And our local food bank needs some help as well. I attended the Bounty of Sutter, which is the first annual kind of a recognition, rec, ignite, it's easy for me to say, recognition for businesses, outstanding businesses in Sutter County. It was held out in Sutter and attended there with the mayor and councilmember Cole. North Sacramento Integrated Water Agency, we met out in Willows. The only really reportable action is they've decided to go from six meetings a year to two meetings to one. The reason being is if, really, if there's no funding for projects, there's really no reason for, the thought of the board was really no reason for the board to meet more than once a year. So that's going to, that's going to start next year, as well as they did, they did elect a chair and a vice chair as well. Oh, boy. Okay, so I had my first community meeting at Sanborn and McCune to discuss the future of the roundabout. And I tell you what, that was well-attended. And they couldn't have, they couldn't have staged it any better for me because I was, I was at a loss for what I witnessed. You're talking about people going the wrong way through a roundabout into oncoming traffic, people passing each other. I mean, it was like Mad Max Thunderdome. I mean, I don't know, I mean, if you wanted some entertainment, grab a igloo and an ice chest and go out there and just watch this because it's, it's really something to see. I've been in communications with Mr. Wolf, and I think we're coming to a conclusion that will make everybody happy out there. that will make everybody happy out there. So I was kind of hoping he'd be here tonight, but I think what we'll probably do is have a second community meeting out there because certainly something needs to be done. I mean, it's, I can, I can see why those folks are concerned out there. And as part of the presentation at the last meeting, I think everyone saw the picture of the car that was stuck in the tree. That's only one of the accidents out there. I think everybody's taken a turn of getting their house hit or their mailbox hit or whatever else, so. But it looks like staff has got something in the works that will fix that. The parade this weekend, I got to give major, major shout out to the county, our partners at the county, By County, and our folks as well. I had an opportunity to go through there on Sunday. And for an event that's that large, and we've, and staff pulled that off really well. I can't say enough about that. And it is, it's, 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 there's a lot of moving parts to accommodating that many people and to do it safely. So I want to thank staff for doing that and doing it well. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. I did go to the SEEK Festival on Friday night, and it's, I was, the young man that was doing the interview asked, he goes, oh, I've seen you here many times. I said, no, son, I've never been here before. The look on his face was surprised, but it was, it was very, very well done. I enjoyed myself. Food was great, lot of people. Waffle Wednesday, went there last week, very well-attended. We had a lot of the Boys in Blue there, I noticed, a lot, which was nice to see. On Monday of this week, I was invited several months ago to speak at the SIRs Group's luncheon, and it was quite, quite an experience, to say the least. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And to Councilmember Pasquale, I just want to personally thank you for being our representative at that meeting and fielding the silliest questions and, and what the heck's the word I want to use? Accusations, maybe, or anyway, thanks for being there and being a voice of reason against folks who may not be that reasonable. Thank you. A few things here. First and foremost, as Councilmember Cole mentioned at the, at the SEEK event, I call it an event because it is an event now. And we were there Friday night, and I also echo her comments about Charn Tomber. Very, very appreciative of his taking an interest in serving as a liaison to, to the city council. And also to President of the Temple, Sarb Tiara, for his graciousness in recognizing the city and its support for the SEEK event. I was there Friday and Sunday. Sunday was busy. It'll be interesting to hear what the estimate of the total attendance is because I've got, you know, different, different things from different folks about what that is, and I'm looking forward to that. I'm deeply interested in, as a representative of District 2, which is, hosts the majority of, of this in the after-action. And because there are some things I think went terrifically well, and there are always those things that are improvement, and I don't specifically have anything improvement. I'm just interested to hear from the folks that were the boots on the ground and see what they thought based upon what I was seeing. So hopefully that happens relatively soon. Attended a LAFCO conference with Mr. Libby. This was a refresher basically, or an update for a lot of stuff that has to do with the Local Agency Formation Commission. I was there as the chairman of the Sutter County LAFCO, along with Supervisor Ziegemeyer, and, and there were some other regional folks there as well. But thanks, Mr. Libby, for filling in the gaps when there were questions about things that were being presented. A lot of stuff going on with that organization, and I think they're moving in a good direction. And they're, they do serve a very purposeful role in regards to growth. And as we've seen in these chambers, there is a lot of interest in, in growing. So it's good to have up-to-date knowledge. I had the, I was invited to speak to the North State Building Industry Association, who now has a secondary group that's builders and developers from, who are either working in Sutter County or are interested in working in Sutter County. It was a very good meeting. Had a chance to highlight a lot of the things that the city is doing as far as encouraging, you know, controlled growth, open to business, open for business. They, there's, there's interest, and, you know, it's just a matter of getting out in front of these folks. The thing, the takeaway, and I've shared this with Mr. Libby already, was that they are, there, there was quite a few of them that are very, very interested in attending our, Yuba City hosted builders and developers meetings. So when we get those geared up again, I've got the names and numbers for those folks. So I think that's always going to be a good thing. This, let's see, this week, I've got unmet transit needs. I'm hosting a meeting for SAICOG here tomorrow on unmet transit needs. And then we have the Sutter County, excuse me, the State of the Homelessness Summit on Friday, which should be pretty interesting over at Boyd Hall. My final comment or whatever is more of a, it's kind of a question. It's not meant for a decision because it's not agendized, but I'm wondering if there's any interest from this council in working with our city manager under his discretion to provide some assistance to the food bank to help fill the gaps with what's going on with the absence of the SNAP funds. We have a lot of folks in our community, I think Councilmember Kirchner mentioned that. Be a gesture on behalf of the city and any other who's, who wanted to sign on. And I would suggest that if we do consider something like that, we earmark or work with the food bank to earmark half of the, whatever donation, if we decide to do, give him direction to do so, would go towards military and veterans subsistence because that seems to be a big need. But there are folks that are just absolutely not getting their benefits any longer, and I'm not sure how much longer this thing's going to go. There's, but you know what? It would be a nice gesture. We give to community events, we give to charitable things. This seems to be something that might be of some worth. So I throw that out for anybody that might want to be considerate of that. And then I think, Mr. Bendorf, you, you have some discretionary ability to, to spend funds if we so chose to direct you to do so.
Right. I just wanted to, if I may, Mr. Mayor, add on to the Vice Mayor's comments. So I've spoken with Maria Ball, so the Executive Director for the food bank, quite extensively, and also had some conversations with local administrators. And I think the gravity of the problem, we know that there is a lot of unmet need with the shutdown and folks in need of food, and especially from our military families, whether they're, you know, retired or active military. So in making some of those inquiries, I think something reasonable, if your council would consider it, whether it's through contingencies, I'll work closely with the honor, and we can find a recommendation to provide some funding night, based upon all the discussions, absolutely critical, and they are in need, but a rough amount that seems to be on the minds of local jurisdictions that I've talked to is somewhere around 15,000. I don't think it's over that. But also designating part of it, or half of it at least, in our responsibility as a defense community too, that would go to our military families or individuals. So it was also, it was interesting in doing some of that background work. They don't know when this is going to be resolved, but even if it does get resolved in part or in whole, folks are still going to go without because it takes a little while to get the machine running again, for lack of a better term, and to provide those folks the benefits that they need. The second part, and I thought it was really unique, the Health and Human Services Agency, I know for Yuba, I don't know if Sutter County's doing it, but obviously they don't have folks applying for new benefits right now because they're not there. And so they've taken a lot of those eligibility workers that handle that work, and they have sent them over to the food bank. And the reason they're doing that is they need folks to help volunteer and pass out food because the need is so great. So they're dispatching their resources from their usual intake and eligibility jobs over to the food bank. So the reason I mention that, I think folks are being creative and they're really responding well and creatively how they're doing that. So anyway, I would be more than happy, whatever your council desire is, to make that work and then report back to all of you, and particularly in the interim, to the mayor and vice mayor, and let you know what occurred there. So open to whatever direction you want to provide, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Thank you, Mr. Bendorf. One of the good things as far as having rules of order and stuff is there's rules of orders that we can actually walk through this and we can get something accomplished here, even though it wasn't agendicized. So, Mr. Chaffin, will you bring us up, the rest of the council up to speed on this process? Because I think we probably want to head down this avenue, and it's, it's a very timely need. And even though the media and the word on the streets, the Democrats are going to open up the government tomorrow because today's election day, like you said, it's going to take time to catch up. So can you walk us through this process?
Yes. The first thing I recommend is reopening the future agenda item portion. And if you'd be willing to do that now, then we can step into the future agenda item. Are you fine with that, Mayor?
I'm fine with that. So we will move back to, we will halt on the council reports and move back to future agenda items, number 10.
Yes. So there's two ways of approaching this. You obviously can't take action tonight, but the need is immediate. And unfortunately, there's not an urgency exception in this particular case because we knew about the shutdown before the agenda came out. However, you can set one of two options on for your next agenda if the council is willing. One is they could set an agenda item to determine whether to fund local food banks or whatever in the 50/50 split. That's option one. Option two is to set it an agenda item to ratify the city manager's action in taking steps to address the local food needs. Now, I, I think you guys see where I'm going on this, but this would be setting an agenda item.
Yep. And yeah, we're lockstep here. So without objection from the council, I would like to bring up under future agenda items that we bring back at the next meeting, a ratification of the report out from the Vice Mayor and the City Manager, of ratification of a contribution, be it from our donation funds or whatever that is, to be determined by the City Manager. And I believe I heard the amount of 15,000. If that is, if that is the intent of the council to bring back for ratification at the next meeting, then it would be so. Can we get a simple nod if that's what we'd like to do? Because there's no action we can take here, but are you comfortable with that, Mr. Bendorf? Mr. Chaffin, are we all good, sir?
Close enough.
Thanks for being flexible, guys, and thanks for bringing that up. Anything else, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I believe that concludes my report. I'm checking. Yes, that's it. Thank you. And, Mr. Chaffin, thank you. And Robert, thanks for doing the back work.
All right. I'll wrap mine out and keep it real quick. Attended the Bounty of Sutter County, attended the Pink October event, which again made large donations to both Sutter Health and made donations to Adventist Health this year. With Councilmember Pasquale, we were, we were free food there on Pluma Street for the trick or treat, trying to keep all the cars from running over the kids. So, you know, it was a great time by the DBA, and I think both of us got a little grayer that afternoon because of the cars, but it was all good. Did a interview with KOVR, our archway, which Mr. Wolf's not here tonight, but he was there with me, that archway, when it went up, took off like wildfire, did an interview. And we're looking forward to the ribbon cutting and the opening of that in the next several weeks, to have that all together. Ribbon cutting at Valley Medical Supply, they're filling a need, and they are right there next to Wells Fargo on Colusa Avenue, that other medical supply offices here in our area haven't been filling. They have a special niche. The Seek Festival and Parade, I call it a festival. You know, it's again to the temple leadership, you know, thank you for, as has been acknowledged, for working with us and stepping up. To Charn, thank you for your hospitality. To Sarb and Mr. DeChange as well for their generosity and stepping up. But at the end of the day, I know they don't like us doing this, but I have to call out our chief and Sergeant Kraus because if it wasn't for the two of you, that event would not have been as successful and as safe as it was. I was there looking at things and on the grounds Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and noticed a huge, huge difference in even from last year, but definitely just going back three to five years, huge difference in steps up. And walked on Sunday with the, with Mayor Singh from Union City. He and I ran into each other and walked the entire parade route down to the temple and back. And he was impressed by the amount of security and how everything was being handled. So Chief Hubbard, Fire did an awesome job as well. They were all over the place. I visited with all of them. Huge shout out to our entire team, all public safety, our entire team across the board. But Chief, thank you for going that extra mile because if it wasn't for your due diligence and Sergeant Kraus, we wouldn't have ended up in the place that we did. So I think I expressed that on behalf of the entire council. We are forever grateful for what you've done this year. So it's been awesome. That's what leadership is about. RWMA met with, we extended the contract for R3 to continue on with a focus looking down the line that we would probably like to have an executive director at RWMA maybe towards the end of the year as we navigate through things. With that, that really concludes it. We got DBA Thursday morning. So we've got that coming up. And anything else from the council? All right, hearing nothing else, we will stand adjourned and get out of here.